Leading up the council to order, shall we begin with the subject?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have three sets of minutes to review, I think, for the 11th, 12th, and 14th of December. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for any of these sets of minutes?
On page seven of December 12th? It's just a typo on the one, two, three, four, five, six line down. Instead of saying form, it should say from.
Six line or six paragraphs?
Six paragraphs, I'm sorry.
Oh, form endorsing, so it should be from.
Yeah.
Got it. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the 11th, 12th, and 14th of December of 2023.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Carlin is not able to be with us this evening, so I'll read the treasurer's report that she prepared in her access. Oh, pardon me, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes of December 11th, 12th, and 14th, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sorry, you're really, I'm really out of it. We forgot roll call. It's where you did roll call, please.
Council President Suzanne Sauter.
Here.
Councilperson Joseph DeS.
Here.
Councilperson Nerman Zubaka.
Present.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Here.
Councilperson Ryan Madoway.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Valerie Leary, City Administrator Max Walton.
City Solicitor.
One correction.
City Solicitor. I'm so sorry. City Solicitor Max Walton and Chief of Police Richard McCabe.
Thank you. Did I forget anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Carlin prepared the treasurer's report, but she's not able to be with us this evening, so all the members of council have a copy in their packet. The total unrestricted funds are $10,54,025.70. The total restricted funds are $2,532,771.40, giving total in the accounts of $12,586,997.10. I'm afraid I can't answer any questions since Ms. Carlin brought it, but if anyone has any, I'm sure she would be happy to answer them via email or phone call. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit?
Just move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. For the administrative report. Oh, excuse me, Chief, report for the Chief of Police.
Thank you, good evening. This should have been brief, but our December report is on the website for your view. Nothing major in the month of December, a couple of community events. The Adopt a Family program was incredibly successful. Again, a lot to do with the support that we get from residents who donated not just gifts, but money and then some of their time to help things, get things wrapped. I think all the families were remarkably touched, so it was a nice event to be part of. Our clinician has started. We, right now, we're in a phase where we're just doing ride-alongs with her so she can get used to the area, and then maybe she can see what getting dispatched to a complaint looks like, and we're in the process of outfitting her so that she's, you know, ready to go. The second part of our program, we're still working on, working with this nonprofit group that they're going to hire. I think they've already hired a peer support. They're looking for a case manager. Once the case manager's on board, then we're going to work with the group that helps us build a database so that we can track all this. So we're one step closer to that, and I think that's all I have for this.
Okay, any questions for the?
Chief, I could just add one question.
Yes.
Not sure if it's currently tracked, but wondering if you, in coordination with the fine men and women of Goodwill, can track for us the instances in which we have road closures. So, for example, Ferry Cut off here by around Three Countries Pizza. If my math is correct, I think that's been closed maybe about three or four times since November. Well, we know that flooding is an issue here in this town, but as we work with our partners in the county and at the state level, having that type of data point for, you know, in the last year, we had to close our roads 20 times. And these are the roads that had to be closed, would better equip us in our communication.
Yeah, I think we can track that down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the administrative report, pardon me. A little bit of progress on the new band shell. I did have some time to search around a bit more on the internet, and I did find some sources for mogul stages. I discovered that was the key word to put in, and that are more suited to our needs and within our budget than the things we had previously seen. So, hope to get together with Mr. Day and maybe some people in town who perform in outdoor venues to look at, you know, what features are important to them, and also to consult with Public Works if they have to move the thing around and back it into place and all that, to make sure it fits their needs as well. So hopefully, we can make some more progress on that. Dog park is moving along, Mr. Zell. Would you like to talk about that now or wait till you're?
No, we did it right now. So we had an initial meeting for, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, six people, five people plus me and two others that couldn't make it. We're talking about the size. We did get initial layout of where the dog park will be. We're still trying to understand that size and that will meet the needs. We're looking to get an actual meeting at the physical location that we can see, and we'll be pulling some information together. Because the contract that we received from the trust, we need to put some roles together and then also define the true size and everything. So it's coming together, and we're just waiting to get a meeting to physically see the location.
Thank you. We thank everyone who participated. Okay. As we mentioned, I mentioned last month, in November, Mr. Day asked if we could have a presentation about proposed housing projects here in Newcastle, including permits that have been issued, and Mr. Zubaka was interested in making this information more available to residents on the website. And I later learned that the Planning Commission is interested in both of those things as well, so we decided to combine forces. Planning Chair Margaret Rain teaches at the University of Delaware School of Business and Economics, put us in touch with a professor from that college, and one of his classes is on management information technology for small businesses and local governments. As one of their projects, the students are required to work with a business or a local government to design a system that they need. And Councilperson Zubaka and I participated in a Zoom meeting with Ms. Rain and this professor on December 14th. We learned that he's had over 100 students go through this class, and none of the projects has failed. The students are second semester seniors, so these are fairly advanced students, and it's a six-credit course, so it's a big deal for them. They want to do a good job. The cost to the city to participate in this is $250. So we could come nowhere close to getting this level of work done anywhere else. So the students may also be able to work on upgrading our city website, and if there's not enough time to fit it into the spring semester, it might have to be another project for the following year, but that could be very beneficial as well. So Mr. Zubaka may have something to add?
No, just that it was exciting to learn that, you know, we could get some great solutions, and, you know, if it doesn't work out, it's not a great cost to the city.
Exactly.
But if it does work out, we get, you know, something that's, you know, improvement, but, you know, that costs us $250.
Right. We'll be scheduling a mid-year budget review for the first week of February. We're working on dates that work for everybody, and of course, once we set a date, that will be announced as usual. The storm drain on West Fourth Street, across from the entrance to the Goodwill Fire Company, is being repaired. And finally, pardon me, Sarah Crawford, who was our contracted tourism director, has submitted her resignation effective February 29th. She didn't give a reason, but until then, she will continue to work. For example, she asked me for some information about Separation Day, so she could continue her work publicizing city events, and she said that she would share all her documents and information with city staff before her final day. The council thinks we'll defer a decision about whether or not to replace this position until the new city administrator's on board and see what he or she thinks. I think that's all I have for the administrative report. So the next item of business.
Council President, can I just ask a question about that? Could we task her to, and I don't know if it's appropriate, to give us by then a layout of what she thinks is opportunity for our city when it comes to, you know, strategies that she would propose to, you know, increase tourism or business or promotion even of things? So just so we can, you know?
Strategies and opportunities.
Look into those as the city. Thank you.
Okay, business from the mayor.
Did we not have?
I'm sorry, I skipped council communications. Sorry about this. Okay, let's start a present tonight. Mr. Madoway, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Heartfelt thank you is made and given to the men and women who served as first responders in our community in respect to the storms and its aftermath. In instances such as this, we're not just talking about the great police work and firefighters, but also the public works, employees, and municipal services, who get up in the middle of the night to do whatever is necessary. Thank you. Last Tuesday, I had an opportunity to attend a Colonial School District meeting that was at William Penn High School. Presentation was made in respect to a district-wide infrastructure enhancements and the solicitation of money and support. A referendum will take place in respect to Colonial School District. It will be held February 29th, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There are several locations where voting will take place, which includes the Senior Center. Extensive information can be found on the Colonial School District's website. The city of Newcastle is effectively a $12 million entity, also known as a business. In 2024, we need to embrace a business mindset, need to be about our business, and make it crystal clear that we are open for business. I'm calling on the city and my colleagues on council to support our membership to the Newcastle County and Delaware Chamber of Commerce. We are not a member of either one of these organizations. Joining does not cost a lot of money. There is a nominal fee, but in order to make money, you have to spend money. And certainly this fits. In business, it's often said that you are at the table or on the table. The city of Newcastle needs to assume our position of leadership as we strive to be included as decisions are formed, financed, and finalized. Joining will give us the opportunity to host events, which will drive business and revenue. Being at the table and in the room with Christiana Care, JP Morgan, Bank of America, DuPont, and others is never a bad idea. There is a precedent. Other municipalities or members need to join in on the fight. On December 3rd, Dustin and Jennifer Ramsdale gave birth to their daughter Madeline Hazel. We wish the Ramsdale family well, and we are excited to see Maddie grow. Had the opportunity with Valerie and Mr. Zell, Council President Zell, to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new restaurant in our city, A.K. Bytes, and we certainly wish that family well. Finally, is with solemn heart that I acknowledge that the lives of Ms. Jones Smith and Ms. Anne Scott and Mr. John Lafferty have been cut short. Our thoughts and prayers are with those families and friends of the departed. I did not know Ms. Smith or Ms. Scott. I know people spoke highly of them. Did have the pleasure of knowing Mr. John Lafferty. Would often run into him at Jessup's or out on the path running. He loved life and he loved the city. He will be missed. As a council president, I yield the remainder of my time, and I want you to know that you're doing a good job.
Well, thank you.
You are doing a good job in these circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Madoway. Okay, Mr. Zell.
I just had the dog parks, so nothing else for you to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Day?
The only thing I'd like to touch on is, and Brian brought it up, was about John Lafferty. John served on the Planning Commission for years here and was really an integral member of that commission. He put a lot of effort in, and his passing will be missed. He was a great citizen for the city of Newcastle.
Thank you. And Mr. Zubaka?
Also a short update, so I wanted to echo Brian's thanks to first responders, you know, to see public works for all the work. Increased work lately, it seems, could keep us all, you know, safe and happy new year. I guess I hope I, 2024 is a successful year for everybody personally and, you know, as a city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Now Mayor here. I'm just gonna sit right here. So, Happy New Year to everyone here in the room and on Zoom and in our city who's not here. Again, I want to echo kudos to our public works, our law enforcement, our fire department, everyone who really worked well together on the storms of the last couple of weeks. I had asked for 30,000 overview reports from everybody, and one of the things that everybody said was the communication between all of them. We're really good. We had staging of all of the barriers and signs and stuff out before the first raindrop fell. So, thanks, guys. I know what it's like to be out in the weather. We are moving ahead with our community outreach. Brian and Councilperson Zubaka and Madoway will join me on February 10th at the library, the Delaware City, Delaware City, uh, De- De- Newcastle Library on Delaware Street, hop into those, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. We were hoping to get into Buttonwood in February, but I just made contact with Ms. Petty regarding the Buttonwood School, so we are going to aim for March to go into the Buttonwood School. So, but for, on February 10th, it's for community downtown or whoever else would like to come by, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00, we'll be in the front conference room. There's a separate entrance door. We'll have a sign out. I don't have anything else. I was with Hello, Mike. That was fun, and the food was good. If you haven't tried it out, try it out. But just be careful driving home, everyone. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any comments from the fire department?
Good evening. Couple things. Since the last council meeting, we've had a few incidents in the city. In December, we had a fire in the Boothhurst Community that's being investigated by the Fire Marshal's. And a couple days ago, we had a fire in Newcastle Manor that's also being investigated by the Fire Marshal's Office. And then in early mornings, or rush hour mornings, we end up having a truck-trailer accident on Wilmington Road there and Castle Hills Drive. So that incident was mitigated pretty quickly with the help of the Newcastle Police and the neighborhood fire companies that we called in to help us out. And then in front of you is tonight, sorry I didn't get it emailed out soon enough for everybody to get a good look at it, but we wanted to fall in line with how Chief McCabe sends out information on what it was on in the city and stuff, the cause, the incidents, that kind of stuff. So this is the end-of-the-year report for 2023. It is broken down by totals of fire and EMS. In blue is the fire responses, and in the amber or wine just color is the EMS responses. This basically gives an overview of how busy we are in district as well as how busy we are out of district. If there is anything else that council would like to see, we can do our very best to get it in a packet. We plan on doing this every month as well, and that way you can kind of see, you know, what our numbers are, how busy we are monthly, and then obviously at the end of the year, a new.
I noticed you have it broke down into sectors, and maybe next month, if we can have a map that identifies where those sectors are.
Okay.
For those of us who don't know.
Okay.
Just to have it included in the packet as like, oh, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just two short ones, hopefully. If it's not too much trouble, if you could add percentages of total on any page going forward, that would be really helpful. Next to numbers, if it's too much trouble, no worries. Even as labels would be okay, if not spaced allowed.
If you turn to the very latest page. Is that, is that what you're looking for percentage-wise?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to pull from two different reports for this. So I would have to go back and look, because I don't know off the top of my head in reference to if we can, if there's percentages that are on a fire report that we pull from. I know there are on the EMS side, so.
The last page will work too, so no trouble. And just a second question is, in district totals, can you explain what's 1,818 standing for, just the?
Yes. So the, so the 1,800s are all the grids in Newcastle that Goodwill Fire Company responds to. So the 1,800 grid is the city of Newcastle, and then part of the 1,810 grid and part of 1,820 is the city of Newcastle.
So this is just for your location when you're responding here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Captain Moore, I have one quick question for you.
Yes.
If it's not possible, it's all right. Just wondering, is there an ability to get, say, a time breakdown? For example, these are the calls from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. or from 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Yep.
To kind of know like when are, you know, when's it really busy versus?
Yep. So the time breakdown, well, on the EMS report, it's broken down in every three hours. So it'll be from 6:00 in the morning, you know, 6:00 in the morning, or sorry, 6:00 to 9:00, 9:00 to, you know, 12:00, that kind of stuff. So that's how it'll be broken down for a quick message.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Moore. Okay, I got the order scrambled a bit again, but I have very few remarks, council president's remarks. I want to echo your thanks to Public Works and first responders for dealing with two storms in a week, including staging last week in preparation for road closures with the anticipated flooding. Public Works also went around and cleaned some storm drains in advance, so that, you know, again, to try to do some preventive work to, instead of dealing with the flooding afterwards, to try to prevent it. The Public Works building did have some damage, wind damage to the shingles, I believe, and so we're working with our insurance company about to get the repairs going. And the only other thing I want is to explain that when we get into the new business, we're going to be voting, we'll designate our top three choices to fill the city administrator position. We closely reviewed, I think it was 13 applications, and from those narrowed it down to six people that we interviewed. That was now, after the interviews, narrowed that further to our top three choices. Tonight, we will designate the priority order of those top three choices. We're not publicly naming the candidates at this time because all of them currently have jobs in Delaware, and only one of them's going to get the job. So we don't want to damage the careers of the other two by making it known that they're looking for a new job. So that's the reason for the way it's being handled tonight. We have discussed this extensively in the executive session, you know, where we could discuss the individuals more fully, and that's the basis on which we'll be making the decision tonight. The next item is public comments, and I'll just remind us again that we'll try to answer simple questions if we know the answer. We can't engage in extended discussion of any item not on the agenda. Please remember to sign in. The sheet is on the podium, and to state your name and address. And as always, you have three minutes, and Mr. Zell is our timekeeper. Anyone have any comments tonight?
Good evening, council and fellow residents. Phil Bros, 1301 13th Street. First, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Excellent news, you, Mr. Zubaka, catching the college student as far as possibly being a big help with getting the city site set as well as working with other issues in the city. Me having been a business owner, management, retail, I also want to thank Councilperson Madoway as far as including the Chamber of Commerce, having been a member with them as well. It's an excellent opportunity because I know Middletown and a couple other municipalities are members, and it's really helped them many different ways. As far as Zoom, for situations like tonight, I feel that council should consider two-way Zoom as far as when it comes to public comments. I think it's worked in the past. The Lions Club has used it in their regional and district meetings, so I know it works. It's a simple way of doing it, so I urge you to investigate that. As far as Michael Marinelli and the Flood Resiliency Committee, he's a really good guy, had a lot of feedback and a lot of input. I've been attending most of the city meetings for six, seven years, and he contributed a lot, so I urge you to bring him back. As far as a committee of one when it comes to deciding on who our city administrators should be, I understand the sensitivity of naming the person, but I do believe that you should have other input. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just jump on the website real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to say thank you, a lot of website comment, but it wasn't just me who did it, so I just want to take the credit for it, but I appreciate it for mentioning.
And I just want to say the committee of one is not making the decision. The council as a whole has already made the decision, so the vote.
No, you're gonna make the decision.
Well, we're gonna make, we have discussed it, and we are going to make the official decision tonight. So the purpose- So the purpose of the committee of one is simply to negotiate the contract in conjunction with the city solicitor with the chosen candidate who accepts the position. So no, this committee of one is not the only person making the decision.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
Just say that, number one, we want to make sure, and we have done everything in compliance with FOIA, the way it's supposed to be done. The selection will be made in this fashion. There will be, there's just one person appointed because if you have two people, then you have a committee under FOIA. If you have one, you have a committee so you can have a direct, correct discussion. Bring that. That contract will then be brought back to council and that will be voted upon by council. So it'll all be public. It's just the mechanics of getting a contract together is where the committee of one comes in.
While we're here, Maxine, just tell the public whether this is going to be part of a regular meeting or a special meeting when we vote on the contract. Just so that, you know, people can anticipate that. Or is that?
I bet it's TBD.
Yeah.
Because we don't know how long it's going to take to get through that process. Right, so.
Yeah, fair enough.
I can say that I put a draft together.
I just wanted to make sure people are, you know, looking out for it.
But it will definitely be a public meeting. It will be announced. It's not gonna be.
The person won't be here.
Right.
Can I comment on the two-way Zoom?
Sure.
So just comment about two-way Zoom, Phil. I think it's something worth looking into. But I think what I wish I did today or the night before is encourage people given to other to submit a written comment, you know, so that people can have, you know, their comments read. So I think that's something we can definitely, you know, like, keep doing as a city and all of our council members in our, you know, platforms to just, you know, keep it, you know, reminding people that if you're unable to come regardless whether or not, right, some other reasons to, you know, submit the, you know, email.
It's an antiquated way of doing it.
I know, but I mean, without that, having to even vote it in, you know, there's still a way to, you know, to have your worst hurt.
Okay, and speaking of that, I do have a written comment to read tonight that came in this afternoon. So this comment come?
Can we make sure anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Before I do that, does anyone else have any comments? Okay. Then I will read the comments from Dorsey Fisk of twenty-six, twenty-six East Third Street. Last, well, she begins, "I had intended to attend this meeting, but the weather makes it too hazardous, so I'm sending this comment. Last Monday, January eighth, I emailed the council members a draft complaint for the Division of Civil Rights and Public Trust and the Department of Justice, which I had drawn up in twenty eighteen through nineteen but not filed. I hope you have all had an opportunity to read it. I thought it might be useful as you are about to hire a new city administrator since it referenced the police, the then-city administrator, and possibly other city officials and several trustees of the Newcastle Common in possible acts of citizen intimidation. Some years had passed since the incident, so I was not sure that it would be useful to submit the complaint to the Department of Justice at this time. However, since the trial of Phil Gross the next day was dismissed with conditional nolie prosequo as the police were unable to produce any evidence he had stolen the signs involved but over his possession, his case may need to be added to my list on the draft complaint. I am concerned that the accusations against Mr. Gross may have been a setup. If so, it is another example of the weaponization of the police to intimidate Newcastle residents a very serious matter. And all of these need to be addressed by council." So.
Is there no other public comment?
Is there any other public comment? Okay, I believe that she has some comments.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address this. And typically, I don't, but this seems to be kind of a growing message. So I wanted to address a few things. And it has to be done generally because we don't speak specifically about any investigations for obvious reasons. So what I want to say, I want to first say that I would encourage anybody that has a concern about whether or not the police department is acting appropriately or not to file that complaint. I would not recommend sitting on it. The decrypt is there for a reason. The Civil Rights and Public Trust unit from the AG's office. I have said from the moment that I took this position that we are doing things the way that we're supposed to doing things, but we encourage people that if they're not comfortable with something, have it looked into. Nothing would make me happier than to be able to describe each one of these incidents that Ms. Fisk is discussing in detail, but I can't. But if you take these to public trust and they review them, who knows what they'll do with this information? But we're very comfortable that the things that we've done were by the book. Not once has any elected or appointed official ever had any impact on any criminal prosecution that my agency has taken. Never. They haven't before. They do not now, and they never will. It's just not an accurate, it's not an accurate allegation. Anybody can come up here and say anything without any background. We have to support the decisions that we make. So it's just not accurate. And I hope that most folks understand that, you know, there's this growing notion that, and over the last few meetings, I've heard a couple of different allegations that we've sat back and let go. One, because there's some privacy issues that are involved. But recently, we were, it was alleged that we covered a lynching. This was a young man who was, had drug and alcohol problems. And I need to be careful. That was a, and I will say this. If, when somebody struggles with substance abuse and mental health issues, they make decisions that sometimes aren't, they're sad, they're very tragic. And for somebody to take a situation like that and make it something that it's not, it's disturbing. So we have been transparent. We are open. If you're not comfortable with my answers, there are, there is a chain of command and there are ways to get answers that you're looking for. So if I sound like I'm, if I'm stammering, it's because I want to be able to say a lot more than I can, but I don't want to open the city up. As I've said this before, transparency equals vulnerability. But I want to be as transparent as I can without making, if I were to support our decisions, highlighting why we made the decisions we made, folks on the other end of this could have a reason to get upset. So we don't want that. We are, we are an independent agency. We do not, we do not prosecute anybody in this city because anybody in this room or anybody that's filled the seats before you has encouraged it, suggested it, or asked for it. We need, we need the evidence that we need before we make those decisions. And anybody that suggests anything other than that does not understand the system. And I just want to lastly end with the notion that some of the cases where an enter of nolie prosequo exists in some of these. It does not define innocence. It does not define guilt. There are dozens and dozens of reasons why an attorney general will not prosecute a case. Nolie prosequo simply means, in Latin, "we don't want to prosecute." It doesn't mean the case is strong, doesn't mean it's weak. It's a decision that could be made for anything. In most cases, it's made, you know, quite frankly because it's one of maybe three or four hundred cases for that week. And the trials are reserved for cases that might, they may prioritize. So none of us speak on behalf of the AG's office, but there are so many different factors that go into this. And I think it's important that folks, you know, understand that we, I don't know how more transparent we can be. I don't know what else we can say to put people at ease that we are not the enforcement arm of a city that doesn't want to be questioned. So I hope, again, I know I'm stammering, but I have to be careful what I say because I don't want to make the city any more vulnerable.
Should I ask a question?
Yeah, I hope there are questions.
Just a quick question to hopefully encourage people. Well, first of all, hope there's not many complaints in general. But for people that do have, you know, like, we're just reading in this public comment, have been sitting on something like that, I can agree with, you know, with your comment that that's something that we would like to have submitted earlier so that if it is true, I'm not saying anything, that it can be addressed by the department, you know, those things are not consistent, persistent, you know, in the community. But just a question for you, is the submission of these complaints anonymous or can it be anonymous? In a sense that it would encourage perhaps any submission of this so that hopefully somebody's not sitting on it for yours?
So I don't know. I know I have a link to the site on my website, so I provided that, but I don't know exactly what that looks like.
Okay.
From our perspective, we use them as well. So if I have an officer that we're investigating that we think has broken the law, we use the same, we use the same group. And I've done this before where we sit down and say, "I'm investigating an officer that may have committed a criminal act." They'll do their review, we do our review, and then we make a decision. They review shootings, they review a lot of things. So citizens that complain about, excuse me, corruption or something to that effect, I don't know what that looks like. At some point, they're going to have to defend the allegation, right? At some point, they're going to have to show why or where they're getting their information from. So, you know, I suspect that these things aren't submitted because there are elements to that that don't exist. And like I said, if anybody can get up here the second Tuesday of every month and say whatever they want to say, they're not under any obligation to prove any of it. So my, you know, but again, you know, I don't know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, too. So the new business, any other comments? Okay, the new business, the first item is a possible vote and selection of a person for negotiation of terms of employment as the city administrator or establishment of a ranking for finalists for negotiation of an employment agreement. So each of the council members has a sheet of paper with the three candidates that we identified as our top priorities. So tonight, we need to rank, order them with the notion that whoever is the first choice, we approach that person, see, you know, if they accept the offer, at least enter into negotiations. If they say, "Sorry, I took another job," then we could move to the second choice and so on without having to have another meeting. That's the purpose of doing it this way in the interest of efficiency. So I will make a motion that of the three candidates listed, the person listed as candidate number two is our first choice, the person listed as candidate number one is our second choice, and the person listed as candidate number three is our third choice. Is there a second to that motion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
So I'm certainly comfortable with the first two candidates. If we got to the third candidate, I almost feel like I'd be more comfortable with interviewing a couple of them again. But that's just my opinion. Can we just use the two and the one? And that's just my suggestion. I don't want to speak for, I'm not speaking for all the council, but.
There's nothing that prevents you from.
I think, I think we should regain or, you know, readjust if we go past the second one, in my opinion.
So I have a motion, but we don't have a second. You can amend the motion. They can't use so many.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, no, we don't have a second.
We don't have a second.
Do we need to vote on what?
Well, no, if I amend the motion, then if the amended.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, are you seconding my motion?
No, don't second anything.
So, all right, I will amend my motion to say that instead of three, a priority of three, we will have a priority of two. And that the person listed as candidate number two is our first choice or first priority. And the person listed as candidate number one is our second choice. And we'll stop there. If, and if neither of those candidates is willing to accept the job or if we can't reach an agreeable contract with them, then we will regroup before we proceed.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion?
So if we're not in agreement with the order,
Okay.
how do we handle that?
We have a motion and a second. It'll be voted upon in this order.
Okay.
If it gets voted down, then we'll do a new motion. We'll.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Okay. So any other discussion? So all in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Okay, so the vote will be that our first choice is the person listed as candidate number two. Our second choice is the person listed as candidate number one. So Ms. Weir will call the vote.
Council President Suzanne Sauter.
Aye.
Councilperson Ryan Matterway.
Aye.
Councilperson Andrew Zubaka.
Andrew Zelt or Nor, no.
Bad night. Councilperson Andrew Zelt.
Nay.
Councilperson Joseph De.
Aye.
Councilperson Nerwin Zubaka.
Aye.
Okay, then I believe that means the decision is carried and the sequence is candidate number two followed by, yeah, candidate number two is the first choice and candidate number one is the second choice.
Will number two? You ready for number two?
Well, now we'll move on to the second issue, which is a discussion and possible authorization for the council president as a committee of one to negotiate an agreement with the city administrator candidate. And that would be the people we've just voted on, starting with the first choice, and to bring terms to council for final approval. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
You need a roll call for this.
Oh, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
I think she could have voted.
Yeah, I don't think you need a roll call.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Aye.
It's just saying that's the person you're gonna negotiate, so. I know it's gonna end this sort of.
Okay, then the final item on the agenda for tonight is the reappointment of someone to the.
Michael Marinelli.
Michael Marinelli, yes. I was gonna read it. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one, a resolution to reappoint Michael Marinelli to the Flood Resiliency Committee. Whereas the Newcastle City Council established the Sea Level Rise Task Force by Resolution twenty-two oh four. And whereas Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two converted that task force to a permanent committee. And whereas Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two also established a staggered schedule of expiration of the term of the current members of the task force. And whereas Michael Marinelli's term expired December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and he is willing to be reappointed. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby reappoints the following person to the Flood Resiliency Committee. Michael Marinelli, Flood Resiliency Committee, term ending January ninth, twenty-twenty-seven. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you stand adjourned? Thank you all very much for coming out on this whole night.